Hi, everybody. I'm Maddie Dixie, I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I'll be excusing myself, so I'm a public hearing to pick up my my looking compared to the applicant. So I'll just have to have the pathways to carry this public hearing.
Thank you, Maddie. You're welcome. Our citizens, as well as the teams doing their development and rolling the public hearing here February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four, the case two zero two four, that day. Although to certain items that are required by the hearing process, let me cover those. And I had a few comments, just about the public conduct you can make. I'll do this, Doc. So introducing our planning board members in addition to myself, we have Heather Beatty, Christina Baudor, Dave Demers, Bill Seburey here as an alternate between you and Maddie. I'll just focus you and then Joanne Sehore, your main coordinator. The Statement of Authority. The Planning Board is established under Chapter forty A of the General Laws of Massachusetts and acts in compliance with Chapter forty A under the zoning bylaws of the town of Handen. Chapter forty one governing the submission and approval of plots of proposed subdivisions. And the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Handen, Massachusetts. Legal Notes. Handen Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four, at six thirty P M. in a townhouse, six twenty five Main Street, Handen, Massachusetts. On the application of Glendale Road Development LLC for a special permit under section seven point one six Solar Energy Systems of the Handen zoning bylaw to allow the construction of a four point nine two megawatt dash A C ground mounted solar facility, coupled with energy storage and associated access driveways, site grading and utilities located at five thirty Glendale Road. The facility will be an agricultural ground mounted system where the material array areas will be maintained as pasture fields, grazing sheep, cattle and chickens, managed by Ledge Valley Farm, who is already established at the site. Information related to this application is on file in the Town Clerk's office and is available for review by the public during all business hours. For the Board, Madison Fixley, Chair, Handen Planning Board, published in the Wilbonham Handen Times, February eighth, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty four. Some of the reports that have been received from other town departments and agencies. The Town Clerk reported that there are no outstanding taxes to date. The Building Commissioner, the Building Commissioner stated that a stormwater permit is required before all permits. The third party stormwater inspector requires to perform weekly inspections and reports to be shared with the Building Commissioner, stormwater designated agent, and he refers to the Fire Chief regarding the energy storage system. The Fire Chief had cool and no comment was received. The Board has held no issues from the Health Director. And the Police Chief Scott Friendly reported no concerns. So let me go through a few things I thought would be helpful to kind of level set the discussion and the helpful information for particularly for the town citizens. So let me read Mass General Laws, as for pains to solve, so it gives you some sense of sort of what as a as a planning board, what we look to for guidance. And what's chapter forty A, section three of Mass General Law states, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety or welfare." So I also wanted to give you a little sense of the process within the town of Handen. So the planning board, really exciting. So this, this is being reported. Is anyone else reporting it? You are?
There's some members, well, we're in Handen Times. What, what's the name? Uh, Kristin Rivers? Kristin Rivers, Handen, Wilbonham Times. Yes, okay.
So let me just back up, just to kind of level set a few things. Those of you that aren't veterans of the planning board meeting. So when the planning board aren't above the process, and this is the process of approvals, we, we, we look to site plan approvals. And we rely on the bylaws of the town and other regulations that we might propose. But that's our role, but certainly are, and it's a continuum of approvals. You have the conservation commission has an approval process. Stormwater has an approval process. All of these separate, I would say, teams within Handen provide their input, which leads to eventually the Building Inspector, Building Board. So sometimes people attend these meetings and think that we broadly cover many things. But we are really, site approval is our main focus. Uh, not that other things don't sort of trickle in. But just to let you know, Conservation Commission has a process, stormwater, and other teams within the town. So the other thing I want to mention is that because there is other information being looked at, specifically peer review, there will be no decision tonight on this project. We're here to kind of move forward with the team uh, that will be presenting this evening. And certainly, there's a lot of other additional information that we as a board need to look at in addition to other boards that I mentioned that are looking at this same project. So um, let's get to the actual presentation itself. The process, the way this will work is that uh, the applicant will provide their presentation. And in addition to their presentation, there will be an opportunity for questions. And the Board can question the applicant's, citizens can question, but really, you're speaking to us to address your questions to the project. And the applicant obviously will be responding to your questions and sort of talking to the Board through this process. So generally, we'll have our presentation with the opportunity for questions. You know, it's always helpful for the questions to be pointed and as succinct as, as we can possibly have them. And as I said, I know there's other topics that are probably in your head and likely grasp. But specifically, we're focused on the site approval issues, conservation issues specifically would be something that, you know, we have to defer, refer to those other organizations, other teams. So I think we're, we're set to go. I don't know that there's anything else that you have to say here, Board. Yes, uh, it's always helpful to remind me, you know, if anyone has a question, please, you know, identify yourself, your name, that. All set? So I think.
Good afternoon, Board, evening, I guess. Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Adam Costa, C O S T A. I'm with the firm of me, Tom, and I'm a Costa attorney and represent the applicant. I'm going to provide a few brief introductory remarks, and then I'm going to let you experts get work and give you more specifics on the project as before you all stand, try to project, so that all those who are in attendance can hear me as well as those who might be participating via Zoom. My firm is a municipal firm. We represent municipalities and private clientele. I've worked on probably two dozen or more solar projects, both representing planning boards like yours and representing uh, applicants for project approvals. I appreciated, uh, Mr. Chairman, your introductory remarks because solar is uh, unique in the sense that it is not only governed by the exemption that exists in the statute, if you write chapter forty eight, section three, uh, but it's also governed by municipal zoning ordinances and bylaws, which tend to address solar uh, and allow it by way of site plan approval and special permit. We're in some communities by right. We are before you tonight with an application for a special permit for this particular project. Um, what I'd like to do, just for the benefit of Board members and to maybe to a somewhat lesser extent, the benefit of the public, although I know they have access to the full application package, is just to walk you through the materials that you have in front of you. I'm not going to read to you something that's quite that thick. Uh, but just to give you a sense as to what you have before you, so that whether it's during the course of the meeting tonight or subsequent to tonight's meeting, as we stated, it's not something that we would expect. But opening, closing in a single meeting, uh, you'll have an opportunity to get any information that you need to apply to standards that you need to apply to take action on the application. So um, the document that I have stapled here is one that you have both electronically and maybe in physical form. And it's entitled, "Application for a special permit for an agricultural ground mounted solar system." It's on Level Design Group, Letterhead, Nick Fassendola is here with us tonight, will be presenting momentarily the, the site plan. Um, and the second page of this submittal is a table of contents. And this outlines for you the materials that we've submitted as part of our special project application. So the first review items are maybe the most important, because they give you a sense as to what the project is all about. You have a, a project narrative that goes on for maybe the better part of twenty or twenty-five days. Uh, I wouldn't typically submit something quite so comprehensive, but we've done it here because you have a comprehensive zone file, and your zoning bylaw has uh, non-substantive sort of procedural requirements, submittals that must be made for, for your consideration, and then has substantive standards that need to be complied with. So what we've done as part of our narrative, uh, for your benefit, is we've gone through each of the systems, the standard, each of the sections and subsections of your bylaw, and we explained to you why we believe we satisfy those requirements. Uh, that's easy to do when it comes to submittals, because we simply said, see that. When it comes to the more substantive standards, we've explained why we believe we meet those standards. And then with community, the public health, safety and welfare, as we said before, will be satisfied.
Sorry, Dan, throw it to you.
So did you speak closer to this?
If you could stand in that corner, then the mic can pick you up for Zoom. That would help. And still just look out that way.
That's, that's fine. I'll have my back to the screen and not, not to, not to the P base. So um, so uh, so again, the objective of that narrative is to explain how we believe this project can be approved. It can be conditionally approved with conditions that will protect the public health, safety and welfare. So that's the project narrative. Again, it's lengthy, but uh, it is comprehensive. As part of that narrative, we have item three, which is that description of how we comply with the zoning bylaw standards. And then we also have, and I'm not going to address this substantively just yet, but I have the conclusion of our presentation, we have a request for screening reduction. You have a provision in your zoning bylaw that indicates that um, for certain projects, projects over six acres in size, you must maintain a fifty foot buffer from adjacent residentially zoned properties. Generally speaking, we maintain that buffer, but there are three areas of the site where we seek to encroach upon the buffer. Uh, in two of those instances, it's a very minimal encroachment. It's a somewhat larger encroachment than the other instance, but again, it explains in this request for screening reduction why we believe you can reduce the screening. Your bylaw allows you to reduce the screening upon a proper finding that the screening can be reduced without impacting uh, a butter's or the neighborhood. And in that, with manner, we've explained to you why we think that can occur. The remaining items that are listed on the table of contents are items that are far beyond my purview. Uh, everything from G I S and FEMA mapping to O and M plans, again, something that Nick Fassendola can, can get into to the extent that the Board has questions. We have all sorts of uh, solar facility information, information that you're probably not all that used to seeing, although I know that you have other projects in town, so your experience with these. Um, but, but information that wouldn't be required for a more traditional special permit or a, a warehouse or a multifamily development. So we have a decommissioning plan and a decommissioning bond estimate and an emergency action plan, the sorts of things that your bylaw requires. And frankly, both most bylaw requires and most, most bylaws require in most communities that allow uh, solar facilities through a special permit process. Uh, we have information about the property, a copy of the deed, the option agreement showing that we have site control. Um, I, I heard a reference earlier in the, in the chairman's uh, uh, remarks at the outset about Conservation Commission having its own purview. Uh, we recognize that. We are presently before the Conservation Commission. In fact, we've been before the Conservation Commission twice now. We went before the Commission in the first instance for what's referred to as a, an ANRAD, an abbreviated Notice of Resource Area Delineation, to determine the location of the wetland boundary. And now we have gone back before the Conservation Commission. We made what's called a Notice of Intent filing, uh, seeking an order of conditions that will approve of the actual project uh, within the portions of the site that will be developed to the extent that they lie within a hundred feet of uh, jurisdictional wetland resource areas. And so we've opened that public hearing, we did so back in December, mid-December. Uh, and we have been continued, as was expected. Uh, currently, the project is under peer review, and we're back before the Board next Wednesday. Um, that peer review is being done by Ty and Bond. Um, and uh, and as I said, it's, it's underway. We expect uh, to make some further progress with that, with that next week. Again, I'm not going to get into too many particulars. I'm going to just hand it over to Nick Fassendola. Or do you want to speak first? I'll just be briefly. So Rory Walker, who is the principal of the applicant, I'll let him speak first and give a general overview of the project. And then at that point, maybe he can step in and describe for you some of the particulars of the site plan. When that's done, um, I will get into some of the bylaw standards to the extent you'd like me to. Again, I know you like the presentation to be brief and want an opportunity for the Board members to ask questions and for the public to participate as well, that I can address some of those bylaw standards, whether it be tonight or at a future meeting, and same thing with the screening reduction request. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Rory Walker. I am uh, the applicant Glendale, Glendale Road Development LLC. I'm also the president of Zero Point Energy and Self Loss. Um, just giving you a brief overview of myself. Uh, I've been in the industry since the twenty eleven. I founded Zero Point in twenty fifteen. Um, are actively developing in Massachusetts and New Jersey, um, where I go for other clients in San Diego, Illinois. Um, to date, I have a twenty five different projects above Commonwealth. Um, again, actively developing three sites, which include this site in Handen, um, as well as one site in New Jersey for a client. Um, up next, give you a brief overview of, again, what has occurred before today. Uh, Glenn Roosevelt, myself and the landowner Jonathan Sutterrell entered into a option and a sightings agreement in February twenty two, um, which then followed by, as I referred to, we got our area of resource delineation done in November twenty two. I, I executed an interconnection service agreements, which is an agreement to myself and the utility company in order to be able to integrate the system to the distribution. I say a specific payment has been made as well as the required documents, that has also been completed um, in September of last year. Uh, the landowner Jonathan applied for uh, what is a classification change from sixty one B, sixty one A, that was approved by the town. And visual understanding in fiscal year twenty twenty five, that will begin. Uh, in addition to that, uh, as I referred to, the Notice of Intent, the contract extension was submitted on November seventh. We have our first meeting on the twentieth of December, and next meeting will be on March sixth. Um, as a last little note, uh, we did procure uh, Ledge Valley Farms to purchase birds and animals uh, this month, two hundred cows, a donkey, some quick wing poultry. Um, and the landowner will work with Caleb from United Agvoate to procure the sheep when it's brought in. Uh, last slide, we're all playing with Nick. I would like to quickly go over to you at a very high level, like what are we showing in the system? Not with regards to engineering civil, just from a technical standpoint. The site plan that we submitted included approximately eleven thousand three hundred models. These models are mounted to a galvanized ground bathroom, which is embedded in the ground through screens. Um, included in that are, again, will be embers, a transformer, and a battery energy storage unit, their cabinets with fire spreader system installed itself. Um, so one interesting thing that may have seen, there is two equipment pads. One pad is located by the site entrance, one is located by array number two. These pads will basically combine the electrical uh, generation from array two or array one and have it go to a singular point. So what this line shows is a horizontal directional drill. It is two four inch conduits that are dug underneath the ground in order to avoid survey, to, to bring the conduits from that array. In addition to that, uh, we submitted a, or on that, with the help of the known Agvoate. We submitted an agvaultral integration and grazing plan. Uh, I'll let Kira talk about that. That basically specifies how this site will integrate agvaultral in with solar use. Um, we also submitted a, an O and M plan. I can answer any questions about how the system will operate once it's disrupted. Um, and again, the last thing is an emergency action plan that deals with any procedure to have it on site um, from the construction to the decommission. With that being said, I'd like to introduce to Nick Fassendola from Level Design, who will go over the civil uh, designs for this project.
Right, so good evening. For the record, Nick Fassendola, Level Design Group, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, uh, who oversaw, who was over to prepare these site plans and the exhibition materials that you see today. I'm going to give a brief description of the parcel as it sits today, and then we'll get into some of the site features we're proposing at the site. So essentially, uh, parcel is, the development site's two parcels, what we're calling fifty, uh, five thirty, uh, the rear parcel is the main, excuse me.
Yeah, we, we can't see if you stand there. The passive use.
How about here, I'll just talk very loud.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So the main development parcel is located, I'll kind of highlight it through here all the way around here, and that's approximately fifty-three acres. Uh, five thirty Glendale Road has an existing single family dwelling driveway, uh, that's located in this area. Now, the primary access to the rear parcel is through an existing access easement through the residential parcel. So we're going to be utilizing that access point to gain access to the rear parcel where the solar array will be located. Uh, we're doing that because the, pretty much the entire frontage of the parcel is encumbered by wetlands. So we're going to be using the existing uh, gravel driveway that's in place versus having a major disturbance in the existing wetland to create independent access for the site. Um, utility poles will also be installed within adjacent to uh, this existing gravel driveway, which will be the, carry the power to the interconnection point um, at the intersection of the driveway and Glendale Road. On this plan, you'll see a variety of different colors. It's a fairly business site. These are wetland areas, streams, buffer zones, all that have been reviewed and approved uh, by the Conservation Commission through the resource area delineation process. So we have a large wetland complex through the center of the site, through here. This is all boring vegetated wetland. Through this section, we have a perennial stream right through here, East Brook, down through this area of the site. It just catches the corner of the parcel right here. We have an unnamed perennial stream. It's a very uh, small stream, but it is perennial, and that uh, with that has two jurisdictional zones. There's a hundred foot zone, uh, we can call riparian zone. And then there's a two hundred foot zone where there's different requirements you're looking to satisfy in those specific zones, and those are the dashed blue lines off the bank of the stream. So like in here, so we have riparian zone on this side and on this side, and it also includes, it comes into the site through this area. We have, we show a wetland buffers in orange, in yellow. The orange line is the town's twenty-five foot no disturb zone. And the yellow line is, excuse me, the yellow line is the uh, one hundred foot structure setback that is not a wetland buffer zone. So all the proposed structures, the panels, the tables, the equipment has been cited within that one hundred foot buffer, or excuse me, uh, zoning setback to the existing property lines. So what we're looking to do with the site is we're looking to utilize a large portion of the existing infrastructure, which is the existing gravel driveway. Uh, there's a horse track that I'm sure everybody's familiar with, that's located through here, a trotting track. We're going to be utilizing a portion of that trotting track um, for access purposes. The access through the, to provide access to the array. Um, all the gravel driveway sections we're going to reuse are, this is light gray color, as shown on the plan. All the dark gray is proposed gravel driveway, which is approximately twenty feet wide. We do narrow it down to sixteen feet. There is this section right here, and I'll get into that shortly. In this area, we have three proposed stormwater management basins that were located here, here and here. The, the general site grade for the property is from north to south. That's why we're citing these basins. I have this one at the low point of this area right here. This one is at the low point, and we have a small stormwater collection swale, which extends over to collect any runoff and bring it to that pond. Um, through this area, we have a small stormwater basin located uh, in the interior part of the track. There was actually an existing drainage pipe there, which is utilized currently to remove surface water from the interior track area. So we're going to, we're going to reuse that existing pipe and create a stormwater basin located in that area. Of the fifty-three acres, the total project encompasses approximately twenty-two acres. And of that, we're looking at approximately ten and a half acres of new disturbance, so tree clearing, tree cutting, and that's primarily in this area, right through here. This area is currently wooden. And the area to the east of the existing track, right through here, is also wooded vegetation. The interior of the track is essentially a uh, field area. There's not going to be much work going in there. It's just going to be mowed, and we'll be able to install the racking tables um, as it currently exists today with no graining work, uh, no clearing, just, you know, get a brush cutter, and we'll be able to uh, mow that site down to a reasonable height and install the tables through here. Same thing in this area and in this area. These are all existing maintained field areas, and there's a small field area located right through here. We are proposing a small wetland disturbance. I know this isn't the Board's purview, but I just wanted to um, make sure you guys were aware of that. We're going to be doing a small filling uh, of wetlands right through here in a small replication area. There's an existing path that's been utilized historically over the years to provide access to this upland field. So we're going to go in and create a proper driveway with a culvert and make sure that we have proper access through that area. Along the north part of the site is where we are requesting uh, relief from the fifty foot setback. And that's because this wetland comes very close to the property line. And in order to avoid having to fill additional wetland to access this large section of upland um, on the east side of the parcel, we are bringing the driveway within that fifty foot zone, uh, which is required for a natural setback for as minimal of a distance as we can. In this area, we're netting the driveway down to sixteen feet wide for this section, just to really minimize the impact through that straight section. And um, that's not shown on this plan, but we'll get to another sheet. We're providing uh, landscaping, buffering, all through this northern leaf section of the parcel along with a solid uh, six foot high fence, a stockade fence, to provide screening and mitigate um, the impacts through this area for that encroachment into the fifty foot natural buffer area. The other two areas where we're asking for relief is a small area right through here. It's called about thirty square feet, just for some grading, uh, to install that retention pond right in here. And same thing right in this area, uh, to do some grading for the proposed turnaround that we're looking to install here. This area has a very well-established natural vegetative buffer to the abutting parcel. There's the stream and the natural buffer zone through here. So um, we feel that the impacts from the minimal encroachment that buffers on are well mitigated through this natural stream here. But where we are unable to maintain a natural stream up through here, we're going to be proposing significant landscaping, solid fence um, to minimize that screening. As Rory said, we have two locations for equipment, so the batteries and trans, main transformers are going to be located here. And then there's going to be a smaller equipment area here with, we're proposing directional boring. Uh, it's going to get, so I'll get that approved by the Conservation Commission, so that's not a guarantee. But we feel that that is going to be the least impactful way to connect this pad to this pad. We've used it on other sites, a very straightforward process. Uh, they'll come in, they make a hole here, drilled there about ten feet uh, below grade roughly, depending on what ledge is. And it just pops up right through here. You don't even see any pipes. There's no uh, trenching with an excavator. Uh, so that's not a real. Uh so that's enough to keep the disturbance for the installation of this long utility run to a minimum. That pretty much covers the the site as it sits. So the obviously, these are all the array tables that we're proposing, as Rory described them, they're going to be screw-mounted. And they're all going to be array tables that we're proposing through that area. We go to uh the landscape plan. Any questions so far from the board while we are trying to get this uh landscape plan brought up?
So Nick, those retention, I'll say, facilities or those, oh basins, I guess, are those like concrete line?
So these are just going to be uh infiltrate, standard infiltration basins, so they're going to have um natural grass slopes. And um we're, we're going to be lining the bottom with crushstone and filled with fabric. I feel that that's a much more efficient um utilization of the bottom of the basin. They're easier to clean, but that way you don't get that compaction disorder, so that's it, which leads to basins failing. But yes, these are um just graded, roamed and seeded on the side slopes, uh standard infiltration basins. So this plan is our proposed uh landscape plan, and I can go through what we're looking to do on site here. So speaking of uh the area to the north, we have all these little dots are plantings, mostly cedars. More uh typical uh screening plantings, we have rhododendrons, arbovites, green giant arbovites, and red cedars. Proposed uh in a staggered array along this northern property line. And in addition to that, I guess we're going to have that solid six-foot-high stockade fence uh to be utilized. As part of the site security fencing, as the entire array will have the required uh safety fencing of the old chamber fence. Except for this northern section of the property. So all the interior areas that are shown as green, those will be the uh pasture grazing areas. Um with the idea of the, from. United Agri-Voltex uh get into a bit more detail on how the these pasture areas will be used and rotated. But the goal is that these, all these green interior array areas will be pasture zones. The areas in the orange, those are identified as possibly gross and hay for the uh winter seasons. So that would, that vegetation will be left to grow taller and then mowed down. And that's all outside of the fence, oh no, excuse me, that's in the fenced area. But it's outside of the array table, so the area under the array will hopefully stay at a reasonable height. Um with the animals grazing in that area. Let's see, the blue areas are obviously our detention basins. And then the uh pink area, that's uh just where we're looking to specify any different type of grass seed. We're utilizing a uh little wetland buffer mix. As most of the wetland zone up through here and along through this area. Anything else like that? I think that pretty much sums up our presentation.
And and I want to add something, a point there. Um and and I I guess I add this more for the benefit of the public and the board. I know you've worked with your bylaw on a few different uh solar global day projects, you may be aware of this. But well, Nick and I use the term buffer and setback sort of interchange, right? And then you got the request, um we have it in writing as well for uh a partial waiver of the buffering requirement. So your, your, your bylaw has a setback requirement as you do with any other type of project, single-family homes. Uh multi-family residential, factories, whatever it might be, you've got minimum setback requirements for the structure. And sometimes for other aspects of the site, you have those for for solar facilities as well. You also have this undisturbed buffer requirement at fifty feet, and that's the requirement from which we're seeking those waivers in those three areas of the site. Now, as it explained in the letter that uh we submitted to the board, the language of your bylaw is that there can be a reduction of such buffer quote. In such instances where it is determined not to have a detrimental effect to the abutters. And in such instances where the buffer will, will have a detrimental effect on the ability of the project to generate power. And so what we tried to explain to you in this three or four-page letter. Um is that we believe with respect to each of these areas, that we can design these encroachments in such a way that it will have no adverse impact on the abutters. And also, as we've shown in the plans, it is necessary for the project to generate power. For example, we can't access that area of the site um here. Unless, uh yes, here unless we encroach in this one location. There's actually a plan that accompanies, it's not shown on the landscape plan, but there's a, a plan that accompanies the request for the waiver. That shows area one being here, shows area two as being here, and shows area three being at the top. And so we've explained to you why we think it's necessary for the project to generate power. But we've also provided some specifics as to the nearest residential structure. Because again, that's really what the bylaws meant to protect right from the abutters. So you're not, there's a possibility when you construct a solar project on a site, that on the opposite side of the property boundary. Twenty-five feet away, fifty feet away, there could be a single-family home. And the buffer is meant to ensure that there is a vegetated area between the residence and the, and the actual solar panels, so that they're not visible. Well, in area one here, the nearest residential dwelling is seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven feet away. In area two here, the nearest residential dwelling is five-hundred-and-twenty-five feet away. And then in area three at the top here, this is where we're making the greatest encroachment in terms of the area of the encroachment. Because we need to circumvent the wetland, in that area, we are five-hundred-and-forty-six feet from the nearest dwelling. And again, all these numbers are in the, in the correspondence, but I just want to talk for that point of clarity. And then I think you were going to tell me, Rory, that um.
Caleb Scott, just again, Caleb Scott, United Agri-Voltex, if you wouldn't mind meeting him, he's doing it virtually, I'm meeting, sorry.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes. Excellent, uh Caleb Scott here with United Agri-Voltex. I'm also the Vice President of the American Solar Grazing Association. Um so we were uh hired uh by ZeroPoint and and have been working with the landowner. And uh and and with level design to ensure the agricultural integration of this project. Um is is uh i- i- is well implemented. So we, we've uh kind of worked through all aspects of it, from, from like fencing locations to, for, for rotational grazing, to seed mixtures. Um to just develop an action plan around that. Um when, when I look at this site uh purely from an agricultural standpoint, um you know, it's, it, it seems like at this point, it's uh underutilized land. Um what we're hoping to do is really bring this back into agricultural use to maximize the amount of calories per square meter. Um that we can, that we can generate here um i- in, in addition to uh, in addition to creating uh energy for the community. So it's, it's kind of about um the, the, um the integration of, of uh agriculture and solar. Is a, is a pretty unique way for us as a country to um to fulfill a pretty, a pretty big need uh within our industry. And that's, you know, we have about, we import about a billion dollars' worth of lamb per year, about seventy percent of the lamb we consume as a nation. And this is a great way for us to kind of uh bring that home, uh allow uh our, our farmers here locally to uh to produce this as a product. So um excited to be working with John and uh and and on, on this property of his to really uh uh help with that. But there's, it's more than just um, you know, regenerative agricultural approach. It's actually, you know, looking at this very holistically, from clipwing poultry to uh, you know, mini- miniature cattle. And um yeah, and just looking at a really holistic approach to it. So excited to answer any questions if you guys have any.
Are there certain types of, I'll say, grazing animals that are more suited to this than others?
Yeah, absolutely. Um so generally speaking, we want to use sheep as opposed to goats because they don't chew on the wires. Um they're pretty l- l- low profile, um but also this site's being designed to accommodate um even a little bit larger creatures. Like, like miniature cattle, um miniature donkeys and and things of that nature too. So, um great question. Uh we, we also use in, in some projects like miniature pasture pigs, like um coonie coons. And and also lots of different types of poultry, runner ducks, turkeys, and things of that nature. This particular site is being designed with rotational grazing in mind. So every aspect of it is to allow those, those animals to move throughout the site. Um in a, in a way that, that both um regenerates the soil, uh i- 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 and sequestrates carbon back into the ground. Um long-term, this is a, a great way for us to um bring, bring this land back. It's really conserving the land, in my opinion, in agriculture for the next, for, for the life of the project. Um as opposed to say, losing it to, you know, urban sprawl or or other sorts of development. It maintains it agricultural use.
So that, that generally summarizes, we start into a presentation, we can't, we could go on and on, submit quite a bit of information. One item I didn't reference, and it's not him, that in the contents is, I also submitted proposed findings of fact. And this is only in, interesting to the board and the Senate, it addresses sort of a three-part standard that's contained within your solar bylaw. Uh for the issuance of a special permit. So uh these are, you know, aren't determinations, obviously, uh that we believe we satisfy those criteria. And why we believe we satisfy them with specific references to the other materials that you've submitted. But we just provided that for uh for your convenience, so you're not at one location. Um our belief that we satisfy the standard in some reform. Uh but otherwise, that more or less summarizes what we've submitted, and we're happy to answer questions from the board and the public tonight and future meetings. Uh again, we recognize this is not a one-night affair, nor do we want it to be, we've got all works to do with the concom. Um and we want to be sure that the concom has blessed the project layout before we're in a position where we can ask the board to, to close down the, the public hearing and hopefully grant the permit. Uh but with that, we'll, we'll take a seat and happy to answer further questions if you may have.
Thank you.
I have, I have one question. I think you men, you mentioned that you would have planned, in the city, that to, um, trying to minimize the impact on the northern edge. Um of abutters, where you're, when you're approaching the buffer zone, who wants us to give you a waiver for approaching the buffer zone? What, what are your plans for minimizing the impact to the uh, to the residents that we have?
So the, the, the proposal, and I'm going to let Nick speak to it, it should maybe be before he can share it again. But it's really the landscaping proposal, again, the objective of the fifty-foot undisturbed buffer is exactly what it sounds like. You want an area of undisturbed vegetation to ensure aesthetically that the project is not visible to nearby abutters. Um first and foremost, to go back to the numbers, with respect to that top area, area three, the closest residence is not fifty feet away, or a hundred feet away, or even three hundred feet away. It's five-hundred-and-forty-six feet away. So not certain that it's going to be all that visible from that residence. Anyway, having said that, we have a planting plan proposed, and again, Nick can speak to it more specifically, but all the dots that you see. In addition to the fact that we're installing the, the privacy fence, which isn't going to be located elsewhere at the site. The remainder of the fence is going to have, the remainder of the site is going to have the traditional safety fence, the chain of fence. Whereas an up portion of the site is going to have the privacy fence in addition, that's going to be added, added, added to the data.
It was, it was going to be a different fence, six-foot fence.
It has to be seven, further than five, so.
So it'll be a seven-foot side.
Yep.
Stocking.
It'll be stock, it'll be solid, whether it's wood or vinyl.
Okay, solid, and then additional vegetation on which side of the fence?
On the outside portion.
On the outside portion, to kind of break up just the solid view of the fence. And it's mostly going to be screening plantings, like I said, arbovites, you know, plantings that are being done with utilized.
And so we, we've actually got, didn't realize, um, that those at home, we actually go and see this better than the board members and the public. But um you, you can see here within the pink area and crossing through the darker shaded area. You've got a line with circles, a line with circles, that is according to the key, showing the location of the stockade fence, it runs along the entire northern border. We then have on the outside of that fence, meaning on the side that's visible to the abutters, to the extent that they can see it. We have all these dots, and the dot, some of them are solid black, some are circular with a dot in the middle. And then there's a northern, northernly property line screening key with symbols. And you can see that there are, what is it, is it thirty or thirty-six? Can you read that number? Thirty-six, six, thirty-six arbovite, twelve rhododendron, twelve red cedar, and a twelve additional green giant arbovite.
Seventy-two.
So seventy-two total plants along that northernly border.
What's, this is, this northern border, does it consist any impact?
So the, the amount that we're impacting the fifty-foot, we'll call it natural buffer, is just this area. Right here, and we're offering plantings along the whole property line. So essentially, this area, it's um it's two-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty feet, and then this whole length is about eight-hundred feet.
Okay, so approximately two-hundred-and-fifty with major impact, the whole area, eight-hundred and something.
The whole, yeah, the whole width at the top, correct. So we're not just sitting, we're not, we're not just proposing the fence and the plantings for where we're dipping into the buffer. We're having a continuous line of screening along this northernly edge. Um as, you know, it's identified as an area of, of concern with, as we're getting close to that buffer in some areas. Um and just kind of being at the site and figured it'd be better for the project to have that continuous line of screening along the north.
And, and to be clear, we, we, we refer to the board, right? I, I, I've represented boards, I've been to four boards and say, we, we don't want the additional repetitive screening. We're concerned that the species are going to die, we think it's just nicer to have a fence. Well, if we want a fence and only a fence, we can just put a fence. We've had other, other boards that say, we don't want the stockade fence, obviously, we need the security fencing, we need some sort of fence. If we could do the same chain link fence, we just want the screening or we want more screening. So we're flexible in terms of what we provide, but we figured that this provides the maximum, um the maximum amount of screening. Screening in terms of this, that, with stockade, privacy fence, in addition to some screening that's in there right there.
Hey, and, and I may have missed you saying this, how much, uh, what, how, what's the distance that you want to invade into the, the buffer zone?
At each location, at each, once you've entered. Sure, so we have, um, so with respect to area one, and you can find your, you probably have more of each other's than I have yours. We need, we need to correspond to the worst event. So with respect to area one, that's right here, and can you go back to the other plans, man, that actually highlights, or maybe you don't have one of those areas apart from our. Um but okay, that's fine, but area one is this area right here. And area one, the disturbance, the proposed limited disturbance is forty-five feet from the existing property line. So that's a five-foot encroachment into the fifty.
Five feet.
Correct. With respect to area two, similarly, the proposed limit of disturbance is forty-five feet. So that's again, five-foot encroachment into the fifty feet. Uh area three is a bit more complicated, the number that we have here is square footage. Because it, it's, you've got this sort of entire area, so we calculated the total square footage of the, of the encroachment. The total square footage is roughly twelve thousand square feet in total.
And we're essentially right up to the property line on that, just, just to be able to. Install the screening and the fencing and the driveway. So uh you know, without, wi- without this strip of screening, it would be about ten feet away from the, the property line, eight to ten feet. But with the screening and the new plantings, we're essentially going to be, you know, within a, a few feet of the property line. So like through that area, just for this, this section we're here. Um we're also installing, there's a, a natural uh storm, like, we're installing a new stormwater culvert right through here. Because in this area currently exists an old cart path. Uh when this whole area was farmed back in the fifties, the, back in the fifties, this entire property was clear vegetation. Uh based on the, the record maps of the area. And it was a cart path that came up through here, and there's an old, it's essentially stacked stone culvert. Right on, uh, right at this uh, the common property line. And it feeds into this wetland, right through here, we have this little neck of wetland that sticks out. So we're going to be improving uh that drainage structure. And you know, the driveway is essentially going to be going where the distant cart path is. But yes, in this area, we are right very close to the property line.
That's the, the distance we are about.
So two-hundred?
This way.
Hundred and forty?
Yes.
I guess two-thirty. Yeah, two, two-twelve, I guess, the correspondence.
And to, to kind of reiterate, why we're doing this, it's to prevent. Additional disturbance to the existing wetland. Now, can we put the driveway through this area and fill this section of wetland? Yes, technically we could, it would need to be permitted, but, um, you know, wetland crossings like that are typically allowed. When you're accessing, um, upland areas and there's no other way to get to it. We figured this, you know, is the preferred option, um, and we're able to install some additional screening in that area, so. We are looking for this waiver to protect this section of wetland and prevent the driveway from coming straight through there.
And I only add a comment would be, you know, it's, it's obviously a trade-off, with the wetland resource area versus the relocation to the driveway. Uh, I've had these conversations with the planning boards in the context of subdivision approval. Uh, that's a greater trade-off, because when you're talking about relocating a subdivision roadway closer, let's say, to a neighboring property. In the interest of preserving or reducing the wetland in fact. It's a subdivision roadway, you're going to have vehicles coming and going all hours of day, and to a certain extent, all hours of the night. This is an access driveway for a solar project, so as you certainly know from your other projects. Not expected to handle any traffic, it's travel when needed to gain access to the site. The greatest travel on the site is going to be when the plant is being constructed, and then it's going to be occasional check-ins or remains. Not, not, it's not the, the equivalent of a subdivision. So we, we thought it was an appropriate trade-off, and I'm happy to engage in the dialogue, but. This is the smitten we made with the conservation commission as well, and effort to join, with use that, uh, that.
So by putting the driveway there, right? How far will your buffers be from the wetlands, or are you actually going to disturb them there?
So we are not disturbing the wetlands, okay, but we're within the twenty-five foot, uh. What they call the no disturbs zone, so we're asking permission from the conservation commission, this kind of trade-off. We need to work within the no disturbs zone, because that's the limit of the property.
So we really can't do that until they, until you meet with that.
Okay, good, thank you, so, so because you have separate areas of jurisdictions, you could legally do that, so. But I, I don't advise applicants to ever close one proceeding before the other, because if they change the plan, we've got something different approved, we gotta come back here and make a new application or. So, we're sort of juggling both processes.
Here in our bio laws. Category for fire protection, talks about underground water storage tank or tanks with capacity of no less than thirty thousand gallons while we're sited. Depending on how many good set that.
We're just switching views here, so. Right here, so our initial idea for citing of a storage tank is in this area right here. As previously discussed. We have a large complex of wetlands along the frontage of the property, so. This is further than one hundred feet from the frontage of the parcel. Um, it's the only place where a tank could be installed close to the roadway. Um, we reached out to the fire chief to discuss this matter, um. To determine if, if he believes that the tank is needed in this area. If we have correspondence with him, and he believes that it's not, no, really, no use to them in, in this location. We would come back and ask for a waiver, but we can fit a tank in this area, right here. Um, it's outside, because the, the wetland kind of goes up here, with all wetland around here. There's a steep array right through here, so it's not a good place to cite, uh, a tank. But we do have one shown on the plan, and also wanted to coordinate with the fire department and just. Get their opinion on, you know, do they have a certain style of tank, manufacturer, there's first to specify. Um, some of it they're familiar with, and sure there's other tanks like this throughout the, um, the community, so. We are, we have reached out and are waiting to hear back from the fire chief. But currently, this is our proposal, um. I guess we made the waiver, as it may be one hundred, more than, one hundred feet away from the property line. Of course, we're going to examine on that, but we've been trying to get in touch with the fire chief, so hopefully, um, we can reach an agreement on. If the tank is necessary, hopefully, this is an appropriate position for it, as you can not install one. In this area, as we have, we straddle with these, uh, restraints right through here, steep grades, wetlands. Um, this is the most convenient place, there is, there will be access off the driveway, that's why I chose this location. Um, you know, it's far enough away from the wetland area. If it was to be utilized for a fire emergency, you know, the fire, fire department could drive up here, fill up. Come down, turn around, and then exit the site, but that's something I wanted to speak to the fire chief about, and we have not had a chance to coordinate with him yet.
Your description of agricultural round-up solar systems. What about this agricultural access, the location of the animals, or is it? What, if you, how would it be in two-two space?
Okay, the land classified as sixty-one A.
Yeah.
And the catalog that's very specific means meeting for agricultural, there's another word for it, agricultural. This is an agricultural, where I'm taking an agricultural use, and I'm adding a dual layer on that, which will be solar. But I, I don't want to call it legally the agricultural take system, it's an agricultural solar. Okay. So they'd be the animal, and the fact that it's intended to run A, together would lead to the agricultural. Okay.
And we want to consider it's four.
No, man, what about it?
And that's those noise levels that we've been coming off combined, and then probably that's what.
Specifying sheet that the cabinet, and I think it was showing D V level, uh, one meter and sixty D V, D V A. And differently, how humans hear it, and D V A, and how it's, the missile. Again, if you come at you, I think it's sixty D V A, one meter, I believe, at a hundred and eighty feet, you are. Well, play below forty D Gs, which is people that are, are afraid there. And the batteries, there are, um, please do with no comment about the fans. Um, but the, uh, these, these birds are the instrument that will make noise. And that is sixty-five, honestly, it's a G sixty-five D V, I have one meter.
And just to add to that, the equipment will be located eight hundred feet from Glen Down Road. And is six hundred and forty feet from the disposal grid, which is obviously what's most important, to hear it on site. I don't know that anybody cares if you're up or away, or ten feet away, but I can certainly care if you're on this property. Uh, so those are the distances, and those are the correspondence.
Speaking of distances, you keep saying that you love, what about property? The distance to the property line for the, uh, to that about.
Sure, so, so I can provide that, both with the decibels, I don't, I don't have it at the ready, and we can do the measurement on the scale plan, and we can get to you with the next meeting.
That's great.
You have any questions? In the board, I haven't pursued your question back, uh, you're telling me the theory that. We have the only opportunity to review, but I see questions, I have a number of questions that might not be available. Or they could be, or maybe the consequences of that, which, what's the next step for us?
Well, we'll, we'll get to that here at the end, we'll talk. And for the audience, nothing here will, will take.
I have one.
What moment?
Uh, regarding the animals, or kind of maintenance, probably. Weird word to use, but. But, Caleb.
And I love Caleb Scott, as I thought to be reading the most.
What, what is their overall purpose, do they be there for the lots then, when there was gonna be a place? Will someone be tending to them, yeah, checking on, will they be given food other than grazing, you know, is this a farm?
Yes, farm, the landowner will, will, will take the animals. Uh, the answer to the question, Caleb is just more knowledgeable in that area, it's all I can add to that.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that, um, so there's, there's definitely three different ways that we can go about doing it. Uh, you know, there, there's a sustained low-impact grazing, there's a more of a mob grazing where a lot of sheep come into each area. And then there's the rotational grazing, um, there's going to be a little, probably a little bit of both. Both sustained, uh, grazing as, as it is on the home farm and, and rotational grazing. So, um, but, but yes, the, obviously, the welfare of the animals is in the best interest of Jonathan, the, the owner. Um, and we're always here for the life of the product to, to help with, um, with, with. Uh, how that looks and, and, and in that action plan, um, so, so, yeah, great question.
At that point, I have another question, um, is there a commitment to maintain this grazing and agricultural use? For the duration of the use of the solar panels, or is this a, let's try it and see if it works?
There is, it is our intent to do it throughout, we don't see a reason to do it from the beginning and then stop. Having said that, I, uh, the landowner and I have an agreement, private agreement, that he will do so for the term of the lease. So as long as there's a lease on the property, there will be agriculture, the degree to which is off discretion. But the landowner will maintain the, the, uh, farms for the, for the lease, the side over.
And will somebody who's died on this property as well?
John, the landlord lives just in the north. There's a house.
Okay, so.
Then there's, there's a barn on with it, with their stall, or I think somebody.
So the other point I want to make is, you know, part, part of the objective with this concept of agricultural, or photovoltaic. Project is that it's going to remain in chapter, right? So that's the intent, and so it's not going to be qual, quite qualified, remaining chapter, if we discontinue the grazing, if we discontinue the agricultural use. They'll then simply become a, a, up an industrial, a, a, a proper, um, so.
Okay, thanks. And what, what are the height of the solar?
Minimum height will be approximately four and a half feet, it has to allow for the miniature cap, like it's. Four and a half feet will be the minimum height off the, uh, ground with a max height of eight feet.
Do you think, or you're sure?
Uh, it could be eight and a half feet, uh, I would say probably four and a half feet to approximately. I can get the exact measurements if you'd like, I just.
They're going to be controlled, and have this noise on this property?
Like I'm not gonna, you know, have it on property, it will be, this, that will be, upon completion of the project and the light. All material will be recycled and taken off the site, and the site will be as it is today, that'll be part of the negotiation.
And, and what actually, we have had, is, is there a possibility that there will be hazardous waste contamination during the construction?
I can think of something, um, we, we've been cautious, of course, we get exposed to these things, and it's all on paper, we're pretty submitted, so we have, um. Of course, I realize as I was preparing for today, our pages aren't covered, so I can't even cite the test page for it, but, um, when, when you look at the, the section. So, I'm sorry, over the side, um, but when you look at the section that addresses, the section of our now, the, the bio law requirements, is a section that says. Uh, provide a list of any hazardous materials proposed to be located in the site in excess of household quantity. Well, I mean, anything other than a jug, and a hand jug is considered to be excess household, uh, household. So we have listed for paving operations, we'll have, you know, nominal amounts of solvents and fuels as are required for the paving equipment. Uh, concrete washout, same thing, um, fuels, oils, and other pollutants used in vehicles and equipment operation, we listed diesel fuel, motor oil, and hydraulic oil. Um, same thing for toxic, toxic or hazardous substances from a spill or other release. Again, we don't intend to have any spills, but that's more wood spill, but it's all out on site. Um, and then for solid waste, the only thing listed is construction materials packaging, is a package against the site, it'll then all, all be removed from the site. So nothing unusual for a project of this sort, uh, and nothing ongoing at that point in time. Obviously, to the extent that we need to bring equipment on site, and that equipment is diesel equipment or gasoline-powered equipment, the. Gasoline or diesel fuel will be located within the equipment, but we have no intention of bringing any sort of materials for storage on site. There's going to be batteries on it, correct? Yes, sir. Anybody's been inspecting.
Lithium ion, somebody whatever has their cell phone, it isn't, it isn't a, uh, great pace, if you would think of this. These units are, uh, fully sealed themselves. So any leaky that would occur in cell will stay inside the container itself, which is on top of the concrete pad. Um, we can certainly discuss, they have to talk about having a containment unit underneath the pad upon which. If the board sees that as progress, we can talk about that, um, but as, certainly, if these individual cells are, uh. Not likely to leak, and if it does leak, it'll contain, it'll leak inside the container itself.
I know you opened the door, right?
So think about these cells as a self-contained unit that are this big, whatever it may be in a building. It will be housed in racks inside a container, okay, a, a cabinet. Right, you're gonna have that door up, the container to check. There will be a door on the cabinets to, to insert the battery cell and to connect the series. Yeah, yeah. Cell itself, it's not.
And all the leaky remains within that cell.
Yes.
The other board, how much?
Can you give the fact what, what's involved with the maintenance of a solar project like this, in the term of the.
Certainly, again, there are not a lot of moving parts, but the maintenance will be, uh, repairing if any converters can go down. If there's any sort of debris that fell on the site, they absorb, um, clearing up. Any debris on the site, uh, like, uh, the, uh, animals, the sheep will do the grazing, normally you have to, uh, have grass cutting. Maintain it, that'll be done with the animals, um, and then once or twice a year, there will be a service truck to come on site to make sure all the torgy marks. Or admin to be, uh, to make sure there's no nesting, and there's no equipment, uh, to make sure that. Um, from an operational standpoint, these systems are housed via a, a, a D A, a D A system, the data hack system. Whereby it will be, uh, remotely viewed, so there'll be a live individual that will monitor the operators.
In addition to that, you have the routine maintenance of the, the driveways. Uh, the stormwater basins that you went with any other type of site development project, and that's all detailed in the operation, I mean, it's planned. For, for the site aspects, this, this one's a little bit odd, as Laura said. The grazing will take care of the vegetation management, but other than that, it's going to be managing. The driveways and the stormwater management facilities is going to be the, the bulk of the, called site maintenance, and that'll probably be. Quarterly inspections, um, and then if there's any minor degrading of the gravel driveways, that would be, be done. Or cleaning out the intended bases, very minimal.
Are you going to have any other ground utilities that you can add to that? Other than this?
So in between the roads, so the modules are getting together, and in between, we will likely, we may go underneath the ground. The sides, the horizontal that.
Right.
Uh, on the active, everything is a follow-up, but the, on, on the surface itself will be moving. That makes sense.
And this made you see that I don't understand those, but in our bylaws, it says all the truly connections from the large schools.
That is what we are showing. The, the above ground will incur after the equipment passed and prior to the. That's the only above ground, everything else.
Okay, any other questions here? Alright, so next step would be to reach out to the community here, uh, in the process of the the rest. Questions before identify yourself. Anyone here can respond, so I'll throw them down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've got a couple of questions. You made me. Zoom, Zoom record won't be there. It won't be on Zoom, but.
Um, my name's John Matthews, twenty-eight North Munson Road. And lot sizes fifty-three acres, what I'm seeing, fifty-three. How many acres of solar panel?
The, the entire project area.
No, that's not what I have.
Couples forty-two acres. Corners themselves, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I believe.
And again, the square footage of modules, there is only twenty-one square feet, but multiply that by one thousand three hundred, that would be approximately area of market.
I don't have it.
So the next question I have to the board. Is that on the northern side? Where we've been speaking about the road. Bylaws, that is basically minimum of a hundred foot of dedicated buffer. Fifty feet on the serve. And explosive for the residential property. Not allowed. And then the other fifty feet can be selectively free. That doesn't comply. But your answer. Doesn't apply. Since we're going with I would solve. I'm going to ask a question that seems a little bizarre, but what's the nitrogen load? Okay, so stormwater is happening aggressively. The reason that I'm saying that is the town already knows, being that I was on the Stormwater Committee at one time. That the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, has identified Santa River as a contributor of excessive, to do things that wants and etc. So with that said, I would ask that tie and bond, okay, include that information. Because granted, now we've got solar panels, where before you used to have all, you know, breaking lane, now you have. That's all I have. I'm sure there'll be more, but.
Mr. Chairman, we're not, we're not going to respond or dump in, Caleb, on case if the board wants to direct a question to us, we'd have to answer it. Uh, some of them we can probably answer on the spot, others we may need to answer the, the future meeting. Um, but of course, we're not going to interrupt, but if you have a question you want us to respond, as the questions arise, feel free to ask us.
My name is Darla, I live in five sixty-four Glendale Road.
Yeah, Darla, we have your note in order.
Um, what, one of the first questions that I have, how many batteries? How many batteries are there and where are they located? Oh, sorry.
All the batteries will be located right here. Are you, it's a question of how many cells or how many cabinets that is? Neither one of those has yet to be determined because they're different by manufacturer. But I can tell you this, like six thousand seven hundred fifty kilowatt hours of energy. That can be um done in a variety of.
Okay, so we don't really know how many, how large of the storage containers that will hold this. Could you know that?
It all differs on the final lot. We specified a part that, that is included in the specifications here. I gave everything, you were able to see exactly how big it is, dimensions, by expression, all of that. Um, I still have everybody on that.
Okay. Um, so I printed these off here. What those are is from a ruling from our planning board on February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Um, the members of the Hampton Planning Board previously determined that battery energy storage systems are not allowed in a residential district. Per their ruling on February twenty-third. Does that stand for this as well? Eighteen, the big storage units that they want to cover acreage of lands with the big battery units that are like tractor trailer batteries. That's what they came in to discuss with the board. And that's a different battery. Battery farm. I don't, I can't answer that.
What, what question I will, it's, it's that sort of legal question, and I did, when much of us in, in Massachusetts, the bio battery of energy storage systems is a principal use of property because you've got solar developers or individuals or entities that were, were previously solar developers that are now developing property simply for the purpose of storing energy. There is no necessary, uh, primary purpose for solar panels or natural energy production. It's simply for the storage of the energy. Uh, many communities have attempted to develop zoning ordinances and bylaws that prohibit that. Uh, there are some questions as to whether that's permissible back there, with an attorney general ruling from back in September that indicates that battery, battery energy storage systems are entitled to the same protection as solar energy systems under chapter forty in section three. So it's sort of a big question. The good news is we don't need to delve into that here because we're not proposing a battery energy storage system as a principal use. This is simply a storage component of a solar energy system. This is your solar energy system. There's got to be some way to store the energy generated temporarily on the site until it's kicked back.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. I want to get the lead line, but the attorney general ruling was because of Tom Glendale. And everything, we had solar systems, we had batteries, we brought the whole town. And you can't do it blanket, uh, zoning, no ban it. You couldn't do it with a selected area, so.
And, and I don't doubt, I don't doubt that. I, I agree, that's not the whole, but the point is that the attorney general views solar energy systems and battery energy storage systems has essentially the same in both subjects, it's forty-eight, the second period protection. So I'm not stating that you can't arguably prohibit solar systems or battery energy storage systems in certain locations of the community. The point is that the agency's office apparently is taking the perspective that they need to be viewed as one of the same, both subject to that, um, protection and jump to forty-eight, second period, it's not prohibited than everyone.
What would they say, the word, the proper energy resources that govern the solar program in the Commonwealth that has done so for over decades? It's called T twenty-five C M R, twenty-nine zero zero, it's called smart program. Inside that program, batteries are mandatory. So any solar system over five hundred kilowatt in the Commonwealth, that uses. So unfortunately, it is not, my joint to have held is the requirement of the D O E R.
My name is Mike Fedora, I live at two forty Ames Road. Uh, it might be interesting to know that these folks aren't the first ones that want to put battery storage in Hammond. Say when they were building the uh, storage units, I mean, the solar fields on Ames and DB Road. Uh, because of transmission lines run for a thousand feet right through the middle of our property. My wife and I were approached by a company and uh, offered a, a really sweet deal, put battery storage on the back acres. Once we understood wh- what was involved and how it was going to negatively impact not only the environment, but the quality of life in our neighborhood, our answer was emphatic, absolutely not. And now you got to ask yourself, you know, who in their right mind would turn down such a really sweet deal? Well, as it turns out, we were in our right mind. You see that Glendale Road and Amesville Valley is beautiful. And it's beautifully quiet. And not just quiet to somebody's opinions, as to what's an acceptable decibel range. It's beautifully quiet. And it's a quality of life that we all appreciate, we all enjoy, and we all strive to protect. And no one lives out there with the hopes and dreams that someday we'd be able to see and hear someone's commercial endeavor. Hampton is our town. We love this town and we love the quality of life that exists for us in this town. We have, we have enough solar. We don't need any more solar and God forbid batteries. We don't need it and we don't want it. Thank you, Felicity.
I'm John Spoh, I live at two nineteen Ames Road. I was wondering if you could bring your PowerPoint slide back up, please, I have a question on the slides. Hold your slide to three. No, before, number thirty. Not this side of even, the one that has to cure the, of the building, might have been slide number one. Yeah, that's it. So for the planning board, can somebody tell me what the date was that the picture was taken?
Twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Can someone describe to me the vehicles that are parked there? Seems like there's an awful lot of them. Are those commercial vehicles? They look like to me.
You see a horse trailer.
They put a law that figures such fine new commercial vehicles.
On what?
On an area of land like this. Res- residential. So in other words, if somebody operating a business uh, this area.
You're asking if somebody's operating a business.
I'm asking for your opinion based on what you see there. What is your opinion?
No, this is the. Why was this?
Seems pretty recent to me. It's an awful lot different. I'd like somebody to put a link. Obviously, no one can.
Yeah, that's it, something. Can I, can I add something? My name is Ed, I have a colleague, five sixty-four Glendale also. We're a butters and we see the commercial vehicles in there. There's heavy equipment, heavy trucks that are being stored there. I don't know what kind of business is going on, but it is a residential area. And many times, excuse me, during the weekend, we can hear some heavy equipment moving there. So it, it's, we're wondering ourselves, what exactly is being done here? Is uh, Jonathan helping some friends by letting him use his property for storage of these vehicles? But they're definitely commercial.
And any vehicle is going to leak at some point, right? So we talked earlier about the fact that there won't be any hazardous materials for it. Any one of those vehicles are infected with gasoline, oil, unusable fuel, etc. So you'd be entered groundwater. After this summer.
No, no, we got. So that was my question.
I did have another question in my. Given the fence, the stockade, if I heard them correctly, is going to be approximately eight hundred feet long. Is that correct?
Roughly, it's going to run that entire weight.
Yeah, that's our entire mine for our property that is going to go on. So you're going to have a seven-foot stockade fence, eight hundred feet long. And like the gentleman before us spoke, we moved out here to Hammond for its beauty, for its wildlife, for its gardens. And we enjoy seeing the deer back there. What's going to happen to the wildlife with eight hundred feet of stockade? Where are those deer going to go? You know, all of a sudden, you know, think there's a barrier there. The wildlife has to go somewhere. Where are they going to go? And the other point that I wanted to make was the um, the noise. Sixty-five decibels doesn't sound like a lot, but if it's twenty-four hours a day, we are above the property. It's almost like a hole. So everything resonates. You're going to hear people talking when you're walking down below. So we're going to eat twenty-four hours a day and we're going to be submitted to that noise. It's, it's, it's very hard to say, you know, the reason we moved out here is because of the piece of pride, the feeling of this town. So we're not a commercial industrial site in the middle of a residential. I just think that's wrong.
Just to reiterate what this gentleman said, my name is James DeVillo, I live at two nineteen Ames Road. The sound is a huge problem, especially for people on Ames. We can hear when someone gets a delivery on Glendale, we can hear uh, football games and minicharts. We can hear the train in Wolverhampton CBSs when that train goes by. So I've spent the last two months talking to acoustic engineering firms in Massachusetts. This was a question I brought up with conservation. They said it was a planning board issue. So essentially what I believe needs to be done because of the topography of the land is having a comprehensive acoustic evaluation done with true, with modeling, pre-construction. So essentially what these companies do, and I have two that are willing to work with our town, I'll have their contact information all through here. They basically go in to the property and it's um, house news and I'd like, we'd like to have a receiver guy at our house as well because of the river valley is and the sound echoes. They measure the decibel level twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week for approximately a week. They take all the equipment that's provided for this project, okay, put it into a computer model. They require equipment specification, the decibel levels, all of that stuff. And they basically model how much sound is going to come off of this array. Okay, so for a project that's projected to be twenty-five to forty years, if the applicant stated in the paperwork, I don't feel like this is unreasonable for us. So for a project that's projected to be twenty-five to forty years, if the applicant stated in the paperwork, I don't feel like this is unreasonable for us. We shouldn't have to listen to it. We may have to, we may have to look at it, which I don't agree with, but no one should have to listen to it. And I do have all this for Joanne. And these two companies are willing to speak to you and I'm hoping that we can get this done. Okay? Hope that makes sense to you, sir. It's called, um, comprehensive, let me see that, Joanne, acoustic, yes, it's a, it's a comprehensive acoustic engineering study with modeling. And I can make that PDF for you. You can do this, I'll just ask for it. Uh, my other thing was, there was talk about the smart program with the projects. I didn't see any evidence of there being any proof or documentation of there being part of the smart program. I'm not saying it exists, I just didn't see it in any of the paperwork. And from my understanding of the smart program, and I'm no professional, the battery requirement is a waiver you can apply for with the state. So the battery is really hard to wire. At least that's how I understand it. Okay? Thank you very much.
Way to dress up. Undercover. Jason Barros, seven thirty-nine Ames Road. I just have a question, but not really apologize, but I made you guys go back, but I was wondering where the coaching number fifty-four on the city bunker was and where the weapons building was. And again, apologize, I said, now here, but, but someone's got kids.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
We do.
So we have three small areas right here, maybe there. Yes, we're dipping in about five feet into that area for some grading. And the main one is up through here, so we can get this driveway in without filling that wetland. And a wetland disturbance which we're permitting with conservation is right here for the wetland. There's a, this cart path that goes through there already. It's essentially like a little ten-foot wide section of wetland and we're going to put this more defined driveway for a little culvert. So this is the area we're filling and we're going to do some replication work to mitigate that up along this side of the wetland right here.
Besides, this is not the only area.
Twenty Dorian Eastwood Drive. I drive up Glendale where every day it's a work. Will I see these panels? Will I see those panels?
I'm sorry.
Say your name. Dorian, D O R I N G. Yes. Eastwood Drive. I go Glendale every day for work. Will I get a visual of all these panels when I drive up Glendale heading towards Wolverhampton? You'll see them? Especially the eight-foot ones?
Yeah, I can't respond, then I go right that way, but I think I can pass the. Yeah, you'll see.
I'll see them.
Likely in the winter months, you'll probably see them from Glendale along this section right through here. You're likely. Get, get a glimpse, glimpse of them. How many feet?
From that.
From right here? It's probably, this is a, uh, eighty, twenty, twenty. It's probably four hundred feet, four hundred feet plus or minus. We can, uh, the bench.
I just have a question, there's. They're going to put the, um, eight hundred feet of stockade fence or whatever. But from our view on Ames Road, when we look out our, or stand out in our yards because we're up higher elevation, alls we're going to see is these beautiful solar panels.
I'm Joe Moore, and I live at eleven forty-eight Glendale. So I'm above two good three woods north of this property. And so I can't hear, get more informed on these type of projects. I just got a budget notice for another project a couple of years ago, like a storage for me that will be a road again for a project that's all along. Some offensive house, you know, handling line, almost the Monty Road, maybe four hundred feet wide, that's what's described right now, so it's actually there. But it's going to be a little bit more far. The notice that I filed was.
What is that? That's not. That didn't come from the planning board.
Probably produced by members of the community, is that incorrect? By, by comparison, we know how many channels are at the middle of the road or the hand we decided to, just with the comparison, but.
Compared to that, compared to what I said, so I'm so recent, like, what we started a year ago with four or five hundred watts, they're like seven hundred now. It's really hard to tell you number modules unless I know what the wattage.
Okay.
I follow that, I can't give you the.
And then when you mentioned this, it's going to be, I thought there would be sheep grazing and chicken.
That's right.
So the bears and dogs and stuff, I thought a lot of that.
It'll be fenced, the, the simple though will be fenced in.
Okay, I got twelve acres, some animals, and all of those animals did under perfect, no problem, even the bears. And auctioned a lot of chickens and then along the north side here, it's the broader benefits with vehicles.
You don't know the exact, what this company that one is using effect, correct? Okay, so we're going back to the point of the comprehensive acoustic engineering study. With model, that won't be able to be done until another event. That is, that's what I was told by the two companies, the Kentucky tank company, it's only ten lines worth of two thousand, but that's what I was told. All the equipment, they have to know so they can prove it with the software. Yes.
One comment, the model itself don't make any difference. So we can specify, there is an inverter that I specified, that I can show you, the equipment that actually makes, again, create straight energy to alter it. Like with a straight line to sign with, that machine, you make that sign with, make some noise. So if you'd like that specification, I'm happy to.
I'm sorry, we were talking about the specific, you said, do you want?
Do you want that specification, you said?
Oh, it's included, you have.
It's in here already, okay, okay.
Do you want anything else? I'm happy to.
No, I, I thought you said it could, it wasn't included.
I'm sorry, no, I, it isn't. Maybe I just made a good point whereby as time goes on and depending on the group area and the structure area, as new equipment comes out, they get better. There may be a shift in the product specification for what it now is. So that's just one of the comments.
Another question, do you need a board, send us one. I believe there's a need to be a come up. The name and address please.
Oliver Canow, four five six Glendale Road. And I have just two questions. Um, one of them, I'm not changing this paper, I don't understand it. Where the chain length fence, where is it? Are you saying with fence? Exactly where that. Anyway, I'm just, I'm just. It essentially encompasses the field. This is line with the circles, so line, circle, and. Yeah, it's going to be, like, it's an F seventeen high. And what we actually specified is what they call an agricultural fence, so it doesn't look so industrial as far as fencing goes. So wooden posts with, um, it's like a mesh type fence. No, it's, um, like a wire fence. And you use them on other sites and they, they kind of give that more rustic look for, for this type of site instead of a, uh, yeah, a chain length fence. So that's the type of fencing that was specified in plan, uh, with wooden posts.
Is there an example in here?
Um, I believe. We, I can get a picture from another site that we, that we put one in and it came out pretty well.
Can you send us some, some intervening discussion?
So, yeah, I'll put you guys a photo, we'll go over to the planning office from the recent install.
Okay, thanks.
And my, my second question is about how long would be estimated from starting?
Uh, nine to twelve. Start grading to thirty. I have one more question. My question is, you said the inverse sixty-five decibels inside there, is there more than one? How many? There's two central inverters.
So there's one kind of where we have that small pad.
One or one pad or one.
Correctional drilling between the two, so that's where the inverters. And then the larger pad, that's where the batteries will also be too, one central to the bar.
I, in follow-up, by Glendale Road, I have just one question. Catch basin. Are the catch basins to trap black water in case of fire? Or the catch basin is there because the ground be disturbed and need of this black water? I don't know.
Sure, so, uh, I can address that. So there's no catch basins like you can see in a roadway. We have what we'll call infiltration basins, so they're essentially stormwater ponds. And we install those in areas where we're, um, going to mitigate the flow from where we're going from wooded ground cover to what's going to be grass ground cover. So the runoff characteristics change and the water travels quicker when it's traveled over a grass type ground cover. So that's why, um, yeah. We decided the, the two major basins are in that zone where we're going to be doing the cutting of vegetation in that area. So it's about ten acres plus or minus of cutting, um, of vegetated areas. So we, that's why the basins are situated in those areas. So for the remainder of the site, the remaining plus or minus ten acres, it's already grass covered meadow type fields. So that doesn't really require a whole lot of additional stormwater because we're not changing the characteristics of the ground. It's still going to, it's going to be solar panels underneath. It's still going to be grass covered and the water is going to seep into the ground and you travel over exactly great. So we're not going to come in and bulldoze all the areas that are already, um, grass fields. So the majority of the clearing, the earthwork is going to be in that wooded area and for the construction of this lot. Everything else is going to be installing of the rack containers in the existing building.
And are the infiltration basins also governing in a sort of a filter, if anything, you decide to take things out of the water or?
True, the soils here are granite four, um, so there, there is some, uh, amount of water that will be seeping into the ground. You always try and infiltrate as much water as you can to get it back to the groundwater table. We're doing that as, as best we can in this area. Unfortunately, given the poor soils, a lot of the water just runs off to the two streams that are surrounding the property and that's why we have this large wetland complex in the center. So it's not, it's not very good sandy gravel material, so we have very low infiltrative capacities with the basins. But they've been sized accordingly to properly mitigate the flow. But I, but I said by mitigating, it's slow down the water, so you collect it. So what we do with the basins, essentially, the water's going to run into it and then we're going to collect it and then we slowly release it on its natural panel. So putting infiltration basins, fill-in basis, you never get rid of the water, you can't just make water go away. We're trying to get it into the ground as much as possible, but then for your typical infiltration requirements and then you release it slowly in what the stormwater Massachusetts state requirements make us look at is what's the existing flow coming off the site at certain points and what are we proposing? So in areas where we're changing the ground cover, that flow is increased. So we collect that water and then release it out slowly through the bases.
Okay.
And stormwater, storm, and else is being reviewed by Time Bond as part of our conservation commission process. We haven't received their comments yet, so they're still waiting on that to move forward. Addressing any items that they may have concerns with and can put a citation on the storm.
The one thing I do want to mention. You, you've all mentioned how many feet away from homes this is going to be. You're not taking into consideration that most of the homes on Glendale Road in Ames City sit higher than this property. So we all looked down at this. And in the winter, it is a clearer than clear view. So it's not that you're on, you're at eye level. All of our homes that sit above this.
The other topics, go to the board or, you know.
Uh, she is Bella, two nineteen Ames Road. Nothing about the map, I'm just curious, do you have any examples of this agricultural solar array actually working with this United Agricultural Company? I did try to look for them, I didn't see any project that they've done in Massachusetts. I would like to see that. And I have a list of examples of zero points, projects that were fully completed. That's it, thank you.
Can you guys respond to that as far as the project?
We are having to provide the board with, uh, any number of projects, uh, that I have created or that United has, United has. So I will send you something on document, that's why that, that was.
We, you know, I, I will say that this concept of agricultural basis is relatively concept, at least in Massachusetts. Um, I, it's, 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 I've been involved in many of these projects, both side of the table. I haven't seen much of agricultural basis. It's, um, it's sort of a recognition that one of the chief components of solar projects is that you're converting land that was traditionally, in many cases, put to use as agricultural land. You're converting it to something that is not agricultural. It's a general, energy generated kind of some sort. Um, and so recognizing that there's been a push to try to combine the two. It's, it's occurred more in other states than here, but it's something that is taking place in Massachusetts. But again, we have a consultant who then provides examples of the element here elsewhere. We may have that information before you.
Lilian Fedora, two forty Ames Road. You're talking about this agricultural project with solar. So where are all these animals going to be housed? And you're also talking about rotation as far as their feeding. So you're going to have other fencing within to keep these animals so that you're rotating them from pasture to pasture? If you want to call it that. Is it a barn? How are they getting their water?
So we will be separating inside into different zones. We.
This is an area.
Yeah.
This is a fence off area. This is a fence off area. This, you said you have four different zones. As answer the question, the barn is located right here. The animals can be housed, they can also be housed outside. There are eight stables inside that barn where animals can be sheltered.
So the barn is all there and you've got these other rotations. What, what are they going to have protection as far as weather bars and things like that? I mean, you've, you've got to give them some kind of protection. You can't expect the solar panels to protect them.
Next to animals, again, they are able to go inside the barn in, 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 in case of extreme weather effects. Besides that, they can also seek shelter on the modules that you think. The landowner again will, I think, determine the best place for the animal, you know, either owner of the farm.
Do you think children have asked you being included in your plan if you're going for agriculture or animals?
Throw in to some of the more important.
I, I just said, if that's what you're going for, if you're going for a farm and agriculture, there is nothing in this plan that shows that you're caring for animals.
So Mr. Chair, we can try and get some additional information before. I guess the point that I would make is, um, we're not permitting agricultural facility. We're not before you for agricultural special permit. We can't be, you're not allowed to require a special permit for agricultural things. That's how I can keep on the statute. We're reporting for a solar project and that's what necessitates a special permit. Having said that, I recognize that we're incorporating three different uses on the same site. And if you've got reasonable questions about how they're going to be operated, we can try to provide you as much information as we have. Uh, I don't know who determined all the particulars as to how the agricultural use is going to occur day to day, week to week, month to month. Uh, and the fact that, as you heard, we have a barn to have the animals with that shelter that they can see from the eleven thousand panels that are on the site. Um, and then we're going to have the site divided into quadrants so that we can provide some separation. But we can try to get you some additional information through conversation with the landowner, with our consultant, if we can.
I have one last question, sorry. Um, I'm sending out, I, um, five ninety four Windell Road. It, it has to do with the agriculture and the solar as well. And you mentioned, I'm not good on, um, numbers for changing, um, uh, bylaws and somebody mentioned that the property will be changed from something, something sixty-one A. There's taxes, the tax exempt to the farm status in January. Is that what you said? No. I'm, I'm sorry.
You know, it goes that. Um, so, um, so Massachusetts separate from zoning. This is where the confusion lies. So zoning arrives under state statute, chapter forty A, under your town zoning by law. But separate from zoning, property owners can see tax exemptions or, or, uh, tax protections. Under chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A and sixty-one B. Uh, there was an adjustment. This property has long been in chapter. Long been in chapter, this property.
What, what do you mean by that?
It was in chapter sixty-one B and it's been converted to sixty-one A. So we went before the border assessors, we made an application, we landed it to convert the land from chapter sixty-one B land to chapter sixty-one A. And still chapter before, chapter after, just.
You said it's, it's long been. Does that mean since the guy bought it two years ago?
I don't know the origin, the original divestification.
I mean, since it was the, the trotting track, you know? So when it was sold to Jonathan, he immediately put it into the tax exempt thing. No.
So, so again, the terminology farm isn't really relevant. United's purposes is act that it's, it's, it's farm, farm is a farm in agriculture in terms of easy for zoning protections under chapter forty A and through the local bylaw. But again, from my client's perspective, I can't, I can't speak to the history of use of the property. It was chapter before this property. This project was proposed. It's going to be chapter, it's going to convert and continue to be chapter land. Once this project gets built, it should have been moved from sixty-one B into sixty-one A.
In sixty-one A, there's a, a farm?
Farms can still qualify, yes. Farms can qualify under sixty-one A, that's correct.
Okay. So, and that was done when?
Right, but it's the, the way that it works when you seek an exemption.
September of last year?
Last, yeah.
In twenty-three. And the way it works when you seek an exemption is they apply the exemption on the effective date uh, in the next calendar year, January first, of twenty twenty-four. So that's a month and a half ago. But it applies for the upcoming fiscal year. So the upcoming fiscal year, it's very complicated at the time. Well, they have a big fiscal year, it's fiscal twenty-five, which begins on July first of twenty-four and runs until June thirty, get to twenty-five. And that's now here.
I don't have a bracket about, but so they apply it in September and it will start in January?
It'll start in July.
Oh, on July first. So on July first, he'll be able to get his animals for his farm?
He could have animals for a farm today. He would have had animals for a farm yesterday, three years ago, ten years ago, because exemptions existed on the state. The, the prior owner.
Oh, he did, yeah.
So farming is an exempt use in Massachusetts. You don't require permission from your municipality to create a farm. You can do it pursuant to chapter forty A, section three by right. It's an agricultural use. So it's not the farming conversion that's being allowed by the chapter designation. The chapter designation is determining, being more favorable.
B is four, C is one.
Like what, like why, why do you change from these?
The different chapters are for different use. So there's a chapter that applies to open space uses, the chapter that applies to recreational uses, the chapter that applies to foresters uses. So depending upon the manner in which you're designating your land, you would see qualification under one fair adaptives.
Okay, okay. So anybody can, anybody that has land anywhere in Massachusetts, so now paddles, anything?
Yeah, so there was that, the exemption, there are some requirements to meet the exemption. There may have to be a certain size or specific requirements in terms of, you know, related from the operation. But there's, that's a state law of government agricultural protection. It's not governed by local municipalities, providing the state's laws and stuff.
And, and so they have animals now? Do you say, do you say they have animals? How to feed?
Landowner this month secured animals for the, the, the farms. They are not on the property yet, they haven't been.
Oh, they're not on the property, but he bought them. Um, I guess that that's all I wanted to know.
All right. Okay. Anything left? Any other questions? All right. So our next step.
No, 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 I was just going to say, we'd like, we'd like to know what the board's plan of action is for bringing it forward and what the board is looking for from us and what they hope to accomplish with the hour and they continue here.
So that is the next topic about continuance. As I mentioned, this topic, both this evening, it's all very helpful to us. But we're going to have a briefing and bigger comments and exact steps from other. So thank you all for the comments. It's a pretty good note to, to convene, talk about that. Um, and I know Bill, but that relates to, I believe, so our next steps are, as we said, um, continuance of this meeting and I need to formally do that process this evening and think about our next dates. So we had the group had spoken about a couple of dates for our next meeting, let's say comparable to this. Uh, and the dates we have, which we also want to spell, with, with May twenty-second and June twenty-sixth. They can have some name. Spoke about these.
So Mr. Chair, um, a- as, as mentioned, we have an ongoing conservation, mission process. So we want that process, like, um, May, it, it's February, so May is quite the wait. Um, obviously, you know, I don't know whether the board's intention is to try and wrap this up in one more meeting or whether you're envisioning two more meetings, but, um, we obviously like to convene sooner than, um, ten weeks from now, if that's a possibility. I recognize the, the work time is precious and it's a challenge. I, I get that, but, um, May is a, a long ways out.
Well, I think we've gotten, uh, one comment there. We certainly got a lot of feedback from the community that I believe the planning board would happily spend some time on to follow up with some of the comments made. And in addition, one of the things we're trying to do is to keep meetings consistent with our planning board use and not create another set of meetings in between our regular planning board use. So that's why, you know, we chose these dates just because of other comments that exist. We didn't want to insert a meeting outside our normal, uh, let's say cadence of meetings. So I think our preference is to work and stay with the, uh, the May twenty-second. I, I really do believe, based on what I heard today, that we'll need some time and some follow-up to be prepared and May makes the most sense to me. Let's try meetings from now, but it's all.
So that's the first, we leave on the second floor. Right. The, the other considerations we have is we have to, uh, send this out by the planning board. Right? I'm sorry, we have to send this out by, from inside the planning board preparing you.
Yeah, we have to send that spring bond.
Spring bond. And, uh, which would be. And then we, we have other publications already scheduled. That's another issue when, um, when a couple of us, two of us that we had to train to sign and, uh, to work uh, data. So that was how we raised, what, how we arrived at the May date as the earliest one.
And are we talking about May eighth or are we talking about May twenty-second? Cause.
The agreements we had, had made twenty-second on.
I mean, I.
I don't know how the eighth came up.
I mean, I.
Oh, oh, he said seven years.
My head, because I heard, I heard May. Um, you know, I have to say respectfully, I, I can't remember the last time the board opened a public hearing on a special permit anywhere and continued it for effectively three months pre-campaign meeting. Um, I recognize that under state law, you have authority to continue a public hearing and that designing a special permit, unlike saying audiences where you have a strict timeframe within which you must act. The ninety-eight block for special permits run short of closing the hearings. So I recognize you have some discretion. The law also says that that discretion needs to be exercised reasonably. You have to act with reasonable expenditure in respect to applications before you. So again, I'm not trying to push the issue. I want, we want to work with board. Uh, a three-month wait to reconvene, not knowing the best you know at last meeting. How likely this orders, someone's up a peer review, decided wants to get some feedback. Uh, that is then going to be responded to by many. Um, we're going to get before you, maybe your consultant time bond is present at that meeting, provides some feedback. There may be some adjustments that need to be made to the plans. So then we're, I would send to June, or July is not pointed, depending upon what your schedule is for other hearing. So, um, again, we're just trying to move through this process, not, not abrupt, but three months is a long time to win.
Do you think we'll hear that? I think, um, tie-in by outside on the PDFs. Actually, we'll send the staff on, I can. We'll sign it and then we'll staff them as soon as we get. And they usually take around, I would say, two, three weeks as long as they're having a community.
That was just our conversation. And we, again, we recognize it's going to be a good twenty-six weeks between time bond finishing and work, us getting feedback. So not a eight-week continuance, a two-month continuance. It's still a long continuance, but we can, we can live with that. Um, late April will be preferred to late May.
Yeah, because it's not bad and you just continue again.
That's what I just said.
Okay.
If it's not done, they open it up. Right, yeah. So if we do a, then.
We can do a, and I, I overheard the conversation. I don't say we're not ready. We're not ready and that can work one of two ways. It can be that your consultant is ready, but our responses aren't, in which case we could need to get feedback from your consultant. If neither is ready or they're still back and forth, then we wouldn't call everybody up. So we're happy to do that. The other thing my, my client was commenting with me on is, and I'm sure that this is consistent with the process used for applicants is, um, you're going to provide us with some form of scope that we're going to approve. If you're then going to get the time bond, that's, I mean, that's what the statute says. Because it has to be, you're going to have to put the money, right? I imagine.
Request the chat. Once we get the chat, then they start the work.
That's fine. And we only ask that because we just want to see the scope. It's time bonds already been engaged to look at stormwater, to look at conservation. So we don't want it to be overhappened. Obviously, time bond will know if it's overhappened because they're doing the other work. But we'll see that scope and then we'll approve it expeditiously. You can get that to us in the next week or so. We can pull the proof and go get the funds and get that work done.
We've got a lot to review.
No meeting required. So the concept of what the meeting requires to approve the scope of the board.
Where are you staying with?
With the time where that.
Usually we send them all the PDF files, the stormwater, the drainage, what we send them to review. They review it all, give us back the proposal and then we just sign it. And there, we don't have a meeting to go over what they're, we haven't in the past. I don't know if we're going to change the process. Um, so February, so March is about at least two, so the second meeting in April. Now we can make that. She just said she was having surgery, having surgery. So we're up to April twenty-one, that was the last one. Twenty-four, twenty-four, I think it was.
And, and that's fine. Again, I wasn't pushing them. Just remaining with voice. Late April is, is, is the vision.
Okay, so April twenty-fourth. Yes, I think probably. What do you decide about the end? We need to change on. Inter, just my, my side. That's you.
Check it out as quite about.
Just needed to become a state approved.
So I understand.
So I understand.
But I'm sorry, this.
No, no. Changing, we have on the document, six thirty, have a, sorry, the document says six thirty, you said you wanted to change.
Oh, yeah. Is it, is there any appetite to change the specific law from six thirty?
Oh, actually, I did the sixteen on it, so we're good. Do I, are they both signed?
Did you make a vote?
Not yet.
Okay, so now you wanna watch it?
Yes.
Uh I move that uh we continue uh the public hearing, case number two thousand twenty four A for five thousand hundred Wendell Road to April twenty four, two thousand twenty four at sixteen. Rory, can you just sign this one too?
Pat, are you closing the hearing? So I can stop this.
You don't close it, you're continuing it.
I know, but I mean.
You just made it.